Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. Call please.
Brewster?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Ewer? Here. Bennett?
Here.
Hart? Here. Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here. The invocation tonight will be given by Jason Jones from Hayesville, VFW Sturridge.
Let us pray. Lord, we are grateful for all the blessings you have given us. Help us, Lord, to live each day to shine your light, to help others to see who you are through us. Bless this community and all who live here that we might be a blessing for others. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have a special order of business. A VFW Police Officer of the Year presentation. It's always great when we can do these presentations, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Grunden, and I'm the Senior Vice Commander for Hayesville VFW Post 6957. And every year we like to recognize the first responders in our community. And this year, as we have in many years before, we've recognized a law enforcement officer of the Year nomination to Master Police Officer David Lang for his consideration, for his works. Chief Whitfield had written a nomination package. I'm going to read an excerpt from that here. Despite a short time with Hayesville, he has quickly established himself as a leader. In May of 2022, he was promoted to the rank of Master Police Officer. With his level of experience and patience, he has been a natural fit to help train and shape new officers in the department. He leads by example, treats everyone with dignity and respect, and is often called upon by his coworkers to share his experience and knowledge with them. I believe MPO Lang stands out in law enforcement community as an officer with undeniable commitment to duty. So, on behalf of the veterans of foreign wars, the United States, a certificate of appreciation awarded to MPO David Lang in grateful recognition of yielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement and maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of all of its citizens, and assigned by our Commander Evelyn Cook and our Quartermaster Eric Kerlock.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I say any words? Do I say anything?
Uh, sure. I have spent a short time in Hayesville, relatively speaking, a little bit under three years. And when I came here, I left a lot of friends and family back in New Orleans, Louisiana, of all places. But I have found a lot of acceptance and a lot of friends and a lot of family here, and I'm very much appreciative of that. So, thank you, everybody.
It's always great when we can recognize our police officers and, you know, thank you to the VFW. It's a great supporter of our community and a great service you do for our city. So, thank you. All right, next we have item B, Proclamation Regarding Police Week. So, it's National Police Week, May 12th through 18th, 2024. Whereas Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Hayesville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Hayesville, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Hayesville Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Russ Kessler, Mayor of the City of Hayesville, call upon all citizens of Hayesville and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances, in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an invaluable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Hayesville to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes, and witness thereof, I hereon too set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Hayesville to be affixed. This date, this 13th day of May, 2024. So, Chief, what the... Next we have the Proclamation for Public Works Week. Advancing Quality of Life for All. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Hayesville. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solidway systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the civic leaders, citizens, and children in Hayesville to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance in public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, Vietnam. Therefore, I, Russ Kessler, Mayor of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, on behalf of council, staff, and residents, hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week, dated this 13th day of May, 2024. I want to thank you for the work you do and all of your everything in public works. That's most appreciated. So, like I said before, it's always great to, you know, recognize our city, our city staff and everything they do for our community. Next is the Proclamation Regarding National Bike Month. May is Bike Month. Whereas May has been designated as National Bicycle Month since 1956 to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encouraging more people to try bicycling. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Hayesville and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling simply by getting out and going for a ride. And whereas the week of May 13th is National Bike to Work Week, which promotes bicycling as a viable means of transportation to and from work. And Friday, May 17th is Bike to Work Day. Now, therefore, I, Russ Kessler, Mayor of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, on behalf of the council, staff, and residents, hereby proclaim May as Bike Month, dated this 13th day of May, 2024. Anybody write it back today? I did this weekend. All right, next we have presentation and approval of minutes, eight minutes of April 8th, 2024. Councilman Bennett?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the April 8th, 2024, business meeting.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2024. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Upstee.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item one, citizens to be heard. A, Ken Bell, from the Hayesville Community Library Director regarding Friends of the Library and Citywide Broad Sell.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm appearing on behalf of the Friends of the Library, which, as you well know, is a nonprofit that aids the library in many respects, principally lately in terms of the purchase of children's books. The Friends of the Library are seeking your permission to hold their 44th Annual Citywide Garage Sale during the second weekend of August this year. In their board meeting, they sought to ask you to make a slight change to the scheduling of the Citywide Garage Sale this year and hope to hold it, in a change from tradition, on Thursday, the 8th, Friday, the 9th, and Saturday, the 10th of August, same basic price charge for it, but those three days. It's much more akin to what all the latecomer cities now do in terms of their citywide garage sales. Derby does it, and several other cities do. And the Friends Board thought that that would be a better service to the public because very few people use the Sunday opportunity now, and would prove to be more popular. It's the largest fundraiser that the Friends do every year, and, as I mentioned before, they use it primarily to buy children's books for the library. So, I'm hoping that you will approve the Friends of the Library's petition on behalf of the 44th Annual Citywide Garage Sale.
All right, thank you. Council, you have any questions? Any motions?
So, they're talking about the 8th, 9th, 10th?
Yes.
Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we allow the Friends of the Library to hold their annual garage sale weekend over the dates of August 8th, 9th, and 10th. The only garage sale permits that will be allowed that weekend will be the ones sold from them.
All right, we have a motion of second. What Councilman Crum said. To allow the Friends of the Library to hold Broad Sell, August 8th, 9th, and 10th, and to not allow any other Broad Sell permits to be sold during that timeframe. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Any other citizens to be heard tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item two, approval of license and bonds. We have none. Item three, introductions of ordinances and resolutions. So, I'm going to read it. The first couple, Brett Shogren is here from Steeple. So, the first one is an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2024-A, for the City of Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of the annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of said interest, principal and interest on said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants with respect thereto.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Brett Shogren with Steeple Public Finance and Wichita Financial Advisor of the City. As you may or may not remember, at your last meeting, you scheduled a bond sale to market your general obligation bonds for the Copper Tail Edition improvements. With the permission granted by you at your last meeting, we put together the preliminary official statement, the offering document. We advertised the sale. We submitted the documents to potential bidders, potential underwriters, banks, and purchasers of those bonds. And this morning, we opened the bids and received six bids on the bonds, which I was quite pleased with. This is a relatively smaller issue. It's a non-rated issue, and to get six bids, I think, is, you can pat yourselves on the back, I think you're respected in the municipal market space as a city, to have that much attraction on a relatively small issue. So, good result, we feel. I'll refer to the bid tab that I passed around. It gives the results of the six bids. Towards the bottom, the true interest cost, that's what we base the winner off of. The interest rates were submitted between 4.09% all the way up to about 4.5%. We received bids from Country Club Bank, Robert W. Baird &amp; Company, Bernardi Securities Incorporated, First Bankers Bank Securities, Commerce Bank, and Northland Securities Incorporated. The best bid was provided by Country Club Bank out of Leewood, Kansas, and their true interest cost was 4.091270%. And that's on 20-year bonds. Just to refresh your memory, 100% of these bond payments will be made by, or be assessed to the improvement district, which is the properties in the Copper Tail Edition, basically be added to their tax bill as specials taxes, and the city will use those funds collected to make the bond payments. This issue is scheduled to close on May the 30th. At that time, most of the money will be shipped up to the State Treasurer's Office to pay off the temporary note, which provided interim finance to originally construct those projects, and the remaining amount will be sent to the city to pay various closing costs, cost of issuance. There are three items for consideration for action tonight. The first one is to accept the best bid from Country Club Bank at a true interest cost of 4.091270%. Once accepted, there is an ordinance that authorizes the issuance of the bonds, and then a resolution that's part of the process, too. So, three action items. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have regarding the bond sale this morning.
Does Council have any questions about the bonds or the bids? Anybody like to make a motion to accept the bid? Councilperson Hart?
I make a motion, we accept the bid from Country Club Bank for a true interest cost of 4.091270.
We have a motion of second to accept the bid as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Thanks. So, now we have the motion, or anybody like to make the motion for A, which is the ordinance authorizing providing for the issuance of the general obligation bonds? Councilmember Bennett?
I make a motion, we approve the resolution prescribing the form and details of the authorizing and directing of the sale and delivery of the general obligation bonds.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion?
They did. They accepted the bid first, now they go on the ordinance.
But Councilmember Bennett, did you read the resolution?
Does that be?
Yes.
Do both at the same time?
We need to do A first. So, I heard, I heard resolution. If anybody else heard differently, I apologize.
No, I didn't. I didn't mistake 2024A. Shall I read it all over again?
Item 3A.
3A. I heard, I heard 3B started.
I thought, I thought we were starting on 3B.
I thought we just voted for 3A.
The first item was to accept the bids from Country Club Bank, and then the second thing would be to approve the ordinance, and the third would be to approve the resolution.
So, we would need a motion to accept the ordinance?
We're on the ordinance right now. And the resolution refers to the ordinance.
Bid's not actually on here, so we did something that doesn't show, and we accepted the bid.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to move that we accept the ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2024A.
All right, so we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2024A, as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
All right, next we're on item 3B, which is the resolution prescribing the form and details of the authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds, Series 2024A, of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and providing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Brett, you have any other comments on that one?
Uh, no, this is, it's just another step in the process. Ordinance, then the resolution.
Councilman Walters?
Make a motion, we accept the resolution as you just described. Second.
We have a motion of second to accept or approve the resolution as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion on that. The first one is really just an acceptance, and the other ones had documents.
Okay.
I can do the next item, too, if you want me to.
Sure, let me go and read it first.
Okay.
All right, next item is item C, Resolution Authorizing the Offering for Sale of General Obligation Temporary Notes, Series A, 2024, of the City of Hayesville, Kansas. So, this is with the Grand and Plaza Infrastructure.
Yes, correct. This is, at your last meeting, I think I talked about, there's three steps in the process. You completed step one, which is accepting the petitions for the improvements from the developer and authorizing the actual projects, adopting resolutions. I think you adopted all four resolutions, authorizing the projects. This is step two, that authorizes the sale of general obligation temporary notes that will provide the interim or bridge financing to actually construct the improvements. And once the, that'll provide the money to construct those projects. Once the projects are constructed, we'll go through the assessment process and sell GO bonds to redeem the temporary notes, just like we did with the last item. So, last item, we're finishing a project, now we're starting one. So, this is step two. Step three will be at your next meeting. We'll, the action tonight schedules the temporary note sale for the same day as your next meeting. We'll take bids on those temporary notes. I'll come back to your meeting, present the results of the sale, and have you consider the issuance resolution for the temporary notes. Any questions on this project?
Council, have any questions on this resolution? Councilman Walters?
Make a motion, we accept the resolution authorizing the offering of the sale of general obligatory temporary notes, Series A, 2024, for the City of Hayesville.
So, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thanks, Brett. All right, next we have item D, An Ordinance Amending and Restating Chapter 16A, the Zoning Regulations of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, and amending the official zoning map or maps of the city to reflect such amendments, all pursuant to the zoning regulations of the city.
County Mayor and Council, on April 11th, a public hearing was held at the Hayesville Funding Commission meeting to amend Sections 303, 304, and 401 through 414 of the zoning regulations. The memo lists the options you have for these items. I am asking for a motion to approve the ordinance with one change. On page six, under zero lot line, the minimum lot depth should have been 80, not 90. Can stand for any questions you may have on this.
What council like to do? Councilman Bennett?
I make a motion, we approve the ordinance, amending and restating Chapter 16A, zoning regulations of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the ordinance as presented, along with the changes that a Georgie referenced. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have item B, An Ordinance to Levy a New 1% Retailer Sales Tax for General Governmental Purposes, of which 10% will be used to reduce property taxes, 50% will be used to fund a local street program, and 40% will be used to fund a park and recreation improvement program within the City of Hayesville, Sedgwick County, Kansas. So, if you, so just let you know, the Sedgwick County Board of Campters met at 9:00 this morning, and then they also met again at 3:00 to finish up the canvassing. So, they certified the special May 7th election. Hayesville had a 13.8% turnout, so both, of which 567 voted yes, and 393 voted no, for a total of 960 total votes. So, that's 59.06% yes, and 40.93% no, a 174 vote difference. So, that was certified this afternoon. What council like to do? Councilman Crum?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance to levy a new 1% retailer sales tax for general government purposes, of which 10% will be used to reduce property taxes, 50% will be used to fund local street program, and 40% will be used to fund a park and recreation improvement program within the City of Hayesville, Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the ordinance as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
All right, next we have item F, An Ordinance Granting to Twin Valley Communications Incorporated a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system in the City of Hayesville, Kansas. So, I believe we do have a representative from Twin Valley here. Council has any questions? Not allow him to, you know, speak after we vote. If anybody has, would like to approve this ordinance? Councilman Walters?
Yeah, I have some questions. It looks like we're, for both of them, it's just how far are they going within the city? How much, you know, all the different questions that you would expect from communications? Are they going to be competitive and all that kind of thing? I'd like to hear from them first before we vote.
Okay, sure. So, the Twin Valley Communications, Herb Serrof?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Aaron, and this is Donna, and we're from just right down the street in Clearwater. And really, just want to talk to you a little bit about Fu-Twin Valley, as we're a fourth generation owned and operated family company, started in 1947. And we pride ourselves on our pledge, which is the highest quality network at a fair valuable price to the people that we offer that service. And our customer care is located right down the street in Clearwater. And the other part of our pledge is to the communities that we serve. We give over, in the last year, we gave over $100,000 back to our communities through either community grants... community grants, variety of, uh, sponsorships and different things. So, those are the four pillars of our community pledges that we pledged. If we are going to commit to bringing service to a community, you have that pledge from all of the employees and the ownership group as we commit to a new community like Hayesville.
But the one thing I'd like to say is that I oversee the customer service department at, uh, Twin Valley, and I'm so honored to do that. I'm also honored to have the opportunity to serve your town in the future, to serve Hayesville, so I look forward to that.
Yeah, and we didn't take any questions that you have about just the actual network or anything like that. We don't have our network guys with us. We're, I'm with the marketing and she's customer service, so we might not have all the details, but we can definitely speak to some of it.
If we approve this, how long will it take to, uh, get the product, product to the different households within Hayesville, and will all of them be served?
Good question. Yeah, our plan is to serve the entire market, and, um, we will be getting started, um, directly, so it's just a matter of getting, um, construction crews into the market and getting, getting started, so.
What would you anticipate a timeframe to get those who want it completed?
Good question. In the areas that we're gonna be starting in, it will probably be within two months, approximately, two months.
What areas are those?
Uh, we're gonna start on the west side. Our network is on, coming from the Clearwater side, so we're gonna be coming in from the, from the west side.
Any other questions?
What type of speed will you guys be offering?
Yeah, we will have, it's an eight gig network, so we can offer up to eight gigs to.
We'll have multiple packages, something to meet, to meet everyone's needs, basically.
Any other, uh, questions? What council like to do? Councilperson pardon?
Make a motion, we accept the ordinance granting to Twin Valley Communications, Inc., a contract franchise to construct, operate, maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second.
We have motion as second to approve the ordinance granting Twin Valley Communications, uh, contract franchise. Any discussion? Councilman Crown?
Well, I know the update we got today talked about how these two franchise agreements are basically the same. I'm curious, how do they compare to the other companies that we already have in town?
Yeah, so we reviewed what we got with, uh, AT&T, and Josh may be able to speak to more of the comparison there, but they're supposed to be relatively the same, so as to not provide a competitive advantage to anybody that has a franchise.
Okay, so we did check on that?
Yeah, and we have to pretty much provide the same deal to everybody. Um, so, yeah, we've used the same terms and conditions for both of the two franchises that are before you today. Tony did a great job of kinda making sure that, um, Public Works and Utilities were taken care of in case we have to move stuff around. Um, I defer to him for comments and questions on that, but what we did is, uh, we took the different agreements and kinda got the one that we were more comfortable with, and then presented back to the companies, and they both approved them.
Okay, that's all I wanted to check to make sure that they were comparable.
Kinda piggybacking on that, twenty-five years ago, with AT&T, they promised fiber optics, which they never delivered, still to this date. So I, that's the reason I was wondering what's going on with this, and what's the probability in bringing it in.
It will happen.
We have a motion as second. Any other discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewok?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, next we have item G, an ordinance granting to Ideatech Telecom LLC, a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Hayesville, Kansas. So, do we have a representative from?
Yeah, there you are.
Hang on.
Good evening. Uh, my name's James Christolik with Ideatech Telecommunications. I'm out of the Wichita office that we have. Um, just like to always start with a little history of Ideatech, uh, just to kinda give some people the background. I know we met with city staff last month to kinda talk about Ideatech, uh, and then the mayor, but it's good to just let everybody know. So, we were founded back in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, by four high school students, uh, with two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we're on our twenty-fifth year within business. Started out as a computer repair shop company, uh, in high school, uh, and then it was once Daniel Friesen, who's our co-founder, he, uh, graduated high school, was attending Wichita State. Um, upon graduation of Wichita State, they started buying DSL companies, as we know, uh, way back in, you know, early days before coax cable and fiber optic was a big thing. And so, uh, in two thousand and seven, uh, we decided to build out Bueller, Kansas, the fiber optic internet. And so Bueller, a city of about thirteen hundred people, uh, had one of the first actual city buildouts of fiber optic within the city. Uh, our mission at Ideatech is to serve the underserved, uh, so we look, we focus on communities and areas where, uh, typically do not have a good option. Our footprint stretches all the way from liberal, all the way up to just about Emporia, and working our way on to the southeast Kansas market. Uh, while we're here today, you know, we've been investing in the area outside of Hayesville, uh, with Mulvane, as well as other competitors as well. I have to tell you that it's a really good thing to see two providers who want to come into a market like Hayesville. Uh, it's a win-win for the resident. At the end of the day, prices, uh, stay low, speeds go up, it keeps everybody checks and balances. And so, I know that we've been working on a project as well. It's just kinda makes sense for us to, to look into the Hayesville market. Uh, we do have to complete a fiber ring project outside of the, uh, Hayesville area, and so we visited with Will there on that project, uh, for that. When it talks about building the city of Hayesville, we've been looking at that. We understand that AT&T Fiber has some, certain portion of the town within fiber optic. Uh, the current area that we were currently evaluating was the one that did not have fiber optic, because we believe that every Kansan should have access to a fiber connection. And so we've been going back to the table, looking at our options and seeing what can we do for the city of Hayesville, or having some ongoing conversations with that. But our intent is to build Hayesville. So, uh, whether it's a time of tomorrow, or it's time of six months from now, that really kinda depends, and when we get to the market of that, we will be having those conversations with, making sure the right people are involved within to those things. So, just a little history of Ideatech, I always like to start with that. Um, you know, a lot of people know Bueller, Kansas, but, you know, we have a few offices out in Fowler, Kansas. We now have a Wichita office with about thirty people hosted within that. So we're about twenty minutes away, and then our main headquarters, obviously, Bueller, Kansas. So, love to open the floor for any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Councilperson pardon?
Make a motion, we accept the ordinance granting to Ideatech Telecom LLC, a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second.
We have motion as second to approve the ordinance granting to Ideatech Telecom LLC, contract franchise as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewok?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item four, notices and communications, A, governing body announcements. Councilman Crown?
Okay, stuff going on at the library. They are getting ready. I think today was the first day you could start signing up for the summer reading program, uh, which I really encourage kids to do. Uh, they are seeing the three third grade classes from Nelson are going over there the first three days this week. Uh, I went over with a class this morning, and Ken and the rest of the library staff did a great job of, uh, talking to the kids, explaining to them how things work for the library, and also really talking about how the summer program works, all the different activities they have, and how they can get prizes for reading books and stuff like that. So they did a really good job at that. Their next genealogy meeting is tomorrow at two o'clock. Uh, next Lego Club meeting is on Wednesday at four, and I believe that one is the second or third Wednesday of every month, the Lego Club. A lot of the students were kinda excited about that today too, that went over there. The twenty-fourth, there's gonna be a Red Cross blood drive at the library from ten AM to four PM. Uh, the library will be closed on Memorial Day, which is May twenty-seventh this year. Uh, May twenty-eighth, there'll be a movie matinee of Brave. Uh, then on the twenty-ninth, uh, there's gonna be a special event there, and it's gonna be the first special event, I believe, of the science, and that's, I mean, of the summer, and that is, uh, listed as a mad science. So that's probably gonna be a lot of fun. Quilters, uh, meet in the community room on Mondays and Thursdays. Knitting and crochet group meets on Tuesday afternoons. And like I said, I really encourage, uh, anybody in town, but especially kid, people with, got young kids and stuff, to really utilize the library in the summer. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Council, have any other announcements? I thought I have some for the, uh, senior center. So the, uh, some upcoming events, spring, uh, paint craft, that was today, so if you weren't there, you missed it. So, I saw the outcome. My wife enjoys going there and painting, and I go there on, sometimes during weekends and stuff. So it's, uh, great. So, uh, card making with Dana, uh, Tuesday, May fourteenth, that's tomorrow. Uh, no commodities, uh, no commodities for May. For, uh, fresh conversations, Tuesday, May twenty-first. Cookie decorating with Bree, Thursday, May twenty-third. Master gardening class, Friday, May twenty-fourth. Ice cream social, Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, and scam awareness class, Tuesday, June fourteenth. So, uh, recurring programs at the senior center, Alhambres Caregiver Support Group, Domino's, Donuts, Coffee and Conversation, Chair Yoga, Balanced Focused Chair Yoga, Billards, uh, Bingo, Bunco, Steps, Cards, Drumming, Well Rep, Writing Class, Crafting Club, Blood Pressure Checks, and Enhanced Fitness. So the Hayesville Hustle numbers for April of this year, the, uh, number of rides was two hundred ninety-three, and new registered riders was two. Compared to last year, the number of rides was two seventy-nine, new registered riders was one. So we are, uh, our senior center is still looking for, uh, uh, committee members. So if you know anybody that would like to be on the senior center planning committee, um, please help them put their name in. Uh, contact, they have to be members. Uh, of course, it's only five dollars for the whole year to be a member. So, uh, please help them put their name in with the senior center. So, uh, this last Saturday, city of Hayesville hosted the Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting, uh, bi-monthly meeting, held, we held it at the senior center. And one of the reasons why I wanted it at the senior center was just to showcase what we have as a senior center and how great it is. So, uh, there were several people there. Uh, I recall how many were attendants, probably forty some. Um, they enjoyed looking around our senior center and looking in the game room. They were taking pictures in there, just to, uh, go back to their cities, just to, uh, you know, show them what we have. So it was great. So during this, uh, meeting, uh, the county presented the, uh, Sedgwick County Emergency Communications, uh, Community Advisory Board, talked about the, uh, different, um, appointments, uh, from, uh, cities of the second and the third class. They also talked about the, uh, RHID, the reinvestment housing incentive district, and they also talked about the, uh, budget roundtables they're gonna be having, May twentieth and June fourth. June fourth one is at campus. That's from five thirty to seven thirty. We've got, uh, Commissioner Lopez back there, so shaking her head. Let's see. That's it. Also, the, oh, one more thing, the, uh, library board has a opening for the board members, so if you know anybody that'd like to be on the library board, uh, please help them get with, uh, with Ken Bell. All right, next, Councilman Crown?
Something else did just occur to me. Uh, make people aware that the last day of school's coming up. School's getting out a half a day, not this, not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow on Tuesday. Uh, so there's gonna be kids out at different times of the day than you're used to seeing them, and just ask drivers and people, are you paying attention? The town is really, really busy at the beginning. School's getting started in the mornings right now and stuff, and I know that kinda slows down, but just remember now in the middle of the day, if you've been out running around, you're not used to seeing kids crossing the street, stuff like that, please make sure you're paying attention and, uh, help us keep those kids safe.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have item B, memo regarding new business license, uh, Leakers Family Foods. Next we have item C, Sedgwick County Fire Department Station Thirty-four monthly report. Number five, old business, we have none. Item six, other business, consideration of pay chart replacement. Will?
Okay, there's a memo in the packet. The, uh, recommended pay chart that is in the packet is one component of the compensation study that was approved by council during the November meeting last year, and prior to this, our pay chart was last updated in September of twenty twenty-two, following approval of the twenty twenty-three budget. We were originally going to use this new pay chart during the twenty twenty-five budget process. However, due to challenges in hiring and retention, we are recommending approval of this pay chart as presented to be effective immediately, and I can answer any questions.
Councilperson pardon?
What are we looking at as far as what it's gonna cost?
Total for. Total for this year across all funds that we pay employees out of is six hundred twelve thousand one forty-four.
Councilman Crown?
What will that do to what we've already had, what we already have budgeted?
So, the two main places that we'll be using, uh, as far as the general fund goes, which is the mill rate, one of the mill levy funds, we had a carryover of four hundred twelve thousand dollars overbudgeted, and then we also have, if we needed to use a portion of, what we have in there is the reserve, which was set up a few years ago, which is set at five hundred and forty-four thousand right now. So we have those two portions from the general fund, but the first number that I mentioned, the six twelve, is not just general fund, it's all the funds that we pay employees out of. So, general fund, water, wastewater, pool, stormwater, street, and recreation.
So this will take us over what was actually budgeted, and we've got money and other things that we can use to put into that to cover?
Yeah, so when we get to the end of the year, or closer to the end of the year, and we've done our budget estimates, if we need to amend a budget, we'll have to do that, amend one of the funds of the budget, we'll have to do that in December, like we have for recreation and pool in the past.
Thank you. Any other questions for Will, or what council like to do? Councilperson pardon?
I make a motion, we approve the pay chart as presented.
Second.
We have motion as second to approve, uh, uh, pay chart replacement as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewok?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next we have item B, consideration of mill and overlay bids for the street program.
Good evening, mayor and council. The bid letting was held for the mill and overlay projects in our street program on May second. Um, the request for proposals outlines that the projects must start by August nineteenth, and gives the contractor forty-five working days to complete the project. Uh, I have included the project map and the bid tabulation in your guys' packet. Um, the estimate was five hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. I'm requesting approval of the best bid from Pearson Construction in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, and this will be paid with street sales tax. I can stand for any questions you may have.
Tony, a quick question. I see the alternate base repair is more. How does that play in, and how much extra is that gonna cost us?
So it's an unknown variable. Um, so basically, when they mill up a, mill, mill, mill up an asphalt road, if their equipment starts seeking through the asphalt, that indicates that needs base repair. In the past, we actually try to do those in-house, but just not knowing the variables or the circumstance, we do require them to bid that.
And it's your best estimate that, uh, we will still save money based on the repair for the Pearson versus going with a higher bid?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll do everything we can to do that internally.
What council like to do? Councilman Benner?
I make a motion, we accept the bid from Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
We have motion as second to approve the, uh, the bid from Pearson Construction for four hundred six, four sixty-four five one eight, uh, as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewok?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next we have item C, discussion of park concerns. So Councilman Crown had a request for us to put on the agenda.
You know, we got the new equipment over there at Rigs Park, and I think most everybody saw some complaints being put on social media about behavior over there of some, uh, mostly middle school kids right after school. And, you know, it's kinda social media stuff, you don't know how much is overblown or whatever. Um, but about a week later, I got a text from somebody who I respect and have known for a really long time. He says, "Congratulations on the awesome equipment at Rigs Park. It's too bad that parents and grandparents can't take their kids, like my great grandson, to Rigs Park to play and enjoy without being hassled by middle school kids telling little kids to hit each other, or keeping little ones from sliding down the slides by stopping in the middle of it and staying there, hanging out at the top of the slides and, and talking filthy language, language to little ones. I won't I won't take him back there. He loves the equipment, but I won't expose my grandson, who is five, to that kind of experience. This is not a good look for Hayesville." So I know that this is a park area, it's open to the public. And Chief has mentioned that sometimes there's even police officers over there, and there's really nothing the police officers can do because it's a park. A public park. One thing that I was curious about, and, and I, I don't know, is if we at least posted a sign out there or signs up there, stating that foul language, uh, is not allowed, and maybe even, I don't know, think about putting an age limit on the equipment, I don't know. But something that was put up there so that they had a complaint, if the police went over there, at least the police would have, uh, rules or guidelines that they could point to, and if the, the kids aren't going to, to follow those rules, that they'd just be removed from that area. I'll say they have to leave the park, just try to keep this kind of activity away off of maybe that equipment that's for the younger kids. And I also know that in two weeks, it's probably not gonna be a big deal until August again, because it seems like this ha, this always happens, especially in the spring, right before school's getting out. Uh, all the middle skid, school kids are getting kind of antsy and wanting to get out and do stuff, and sometimes they're not on their best behavior as, I totally understand, I was that age, too, but... We got that new equipment, we want the, the kids to enjoy that new equipment, and I just wanna see if there's anything from a legal standpoint that we can do to try to make that a safe space for the younger kids.
You're looking at me, aren't you, Seaver?
Yes.
So, um, you know, we have, you know, um, we passed rules regarding the, the dog park, you know, a few years ago when we did that. So, you know, my thought is, you know, if we wanna set forth rules, you know, to think about rules for the park in general, and maybe not just specifically for the playground, maybe this is something that the, the Park Board, you know, should tackle maybe first, you know, get some input from the community, I would think, before we just sort of throw something at you guys. But, you know, if Counsel wants to put together rules regarding the park or the playground, you know, let's go through a process, get community input, and then if it's something you guys wanna move forward with, you know, we can do an ordinance and set forth rules and regulations like we have at the dog park, so.
I do kind of like that idea, and one thing, like I said, 'cause it's probably gonna stop being a problem in a couple of weeks, but then it'll start up again. So if we do have kind of a time period where we could do something like that, I'm, so, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the Council thinks. I mean, uh, Justin has talked to me about this a few times, 'cause he's really concerned about the problem as well, and so I just don't know how everybody else is feeling. I think that sounds like a good plan, maybe turn it over to the Park Board and see if they could come up with something or different ideas. I know I was, I've been looking at stuff, and there are towns that have, like, it's deserving the peace and all this and that. I'm not looking to try to get somebody a fine or something like that, I just wanna try to make sure that that's a safe space for kids.
I think it's a good idea, it's also a matter of, uh, how to enforce it.
Well, that's why I didn't, 'cause like right now, the, the police really don't have anything to enforce. I mean, the, basically, some of the kids are causing a problem over there, no, the police can't do anything to them. So at least if we had something that the police could point at, say, you know, you're not following these, these guidelines, so you just can't be over here right now. I don't know if that works or not.
Would, would posting a set of guidelines, would that make, uh, those rules more enforceable for an officer that might come upon that?
Well, that would depend on what parameters you wanna call enforcement. Um, if it's a matter of having a child leave a park, then we can probably do that. Beyond that, if it's not a criminal activity, we can't force anybody to do anything. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, isn't it? Until there's a criminal act committed, we can't, we can't force somebody to do something. If we have rules and some sort of boundaries set up, or some sort of guidelines or parameters in there from, from the Park Board, then there's some sort of a recourse for that, and whether it's a police officer over there or another city employee acting as a city official there that says, "Hey, you're acting up, we're gonna give you a warning," and then they, whatever they decide to come up with, and then that way, that could be enforced that way. But it, it doesn't necessarily have to be the police, it could be any, any city official, basically, that could do that. And then it, it takes away from, they're not gonna say, "Well, the police can't do anything," because it's anybody that works for the city, any city official or whoever they deem to, to take care of that. And that would be our recommendation. I'll discuss it with Josh, and again, we're, we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied as the police, because until there's a criminal act, there's not a lot we can do. To ge, to give you an example, earlier today, we had a call over there, um, and it wasn't a juvenile. It, it wasn't a juvenile that was over there with the issue today, it was a grown man. He was over there, and he had his handgun on his hip, carrying within state law, open carry, it's completely legal in Kansas, there's nothing to say you can't carry a gun to a park. Followed all the rules, followed all the statutes, somebody didn't like it, they called nine-one-one, said, "Hey, there's a guy over here with a gun, well, what's he doing?" Nothing, it's just on his hip. We told him we didn't like it, and he said, "Oh, okay," and then he continued to go about his business. We get called, we have to go over there, we have to respond to the call because it's a call for service, but there's nothing we can do legally. We can't make the guy leave the park, he's not breaking any laws. So that's kind of, that's just an example of where we have these issues, it's not just with the kids, don't get me wrong. There's, there's a lot of kids over there that cause a lot of problems, and we try to keep them moving along through the park as much as we can. But when it comes to other things, if there's no violation of the law, we can't do a whole lot except for maybe go over there and ask somebody to leave, and if they don't want to, there's not a whole lot we can do at this point. So, I mean, I, I completely agree with Josh, I think it's a great idea to kind of maybe get some public input and, and have the Park Board sit down and kind of look at this. Similar to what they've done with the dog park as far as coming up with some, some, uh, recommendations or some rules or guidelines that they can put out there. I know other cities have that, some cities have no signs up there, some cities have big long signs that I don't think anybody would be able to sit there and read, because they're really long and nobody wants to take the time to do that. So, um, I, I completely agree with Josh as far as, um, passing this on and trying to get some public input to see what exactly everybody wants, what's the outcome that the community wants out of this.
Thank you.
And if I could just add, just kind of our, our rate of vandalism over the last few years has definitely increased. Just over the weekend in the Farm and Art bathrooms, we had a group of what appeared to be middle schoolers decide to go through there, uh, pull the sink down, kick the trash can in, just pull all the hand soap dispensers off, that's almost a routine thing, and the Police Department does a good job with our security cameras. I think trying to take it to schools, trying to catch these people, and at that point, they do have to pay restitution, we keep track of labor and material costs for that, but it's kind of related but not related, it's kind of generally the same thing.
Thanks, Counsel, Walter's?
Yeah, I agree with some of the comments that Ben has said, do we need to make a resolution on, to get started on this, or can you direct the Park Board to?
Yep, we'll, we'll do it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything else with the sign?
I was just gonna say, if, if we're gonna do that, throw it to the Park Board, I would recommend even, uh, inviting, let the school district go about and see if they wanna, 'cause I know the police have been kind of working with the admin over there to try to find out if they've got any ideas, and, and they may have some ideas, too, or what they think may be help with the situation as well.
Schools don't have any signs, do they?
Uh, well, no, but all the kids, I mean, when you're a student, you have to sign, they have, they have to sign, uh, behavior sheets, and parents have to sign stuff, so it's all covered in there.
All right, any other, any other discussion on, uh, parks concern? All right, thanks. All right, moving on to Item Seven, Department Reports, A Administrative Services Attorney.
The Economic Development Office is still accepting application, pre-applications for the CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Grant. So if anyone is interested in that, they can contact Danielle over there, and then Hometown Market will open on Saturday, June first, hours are eight AM to noon on Saturdays.
All right, next we have Item B, City Clerk.
Good evening. On May twenty-seventh, city offices will be closed for Memorial Day. If you have an emergency for the water or sewer, please call five-two-nine-five-nine-one-two. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next we have Police, Chief.
Think I already used it most of my time, so I'll be brief. Just wanna say thank you to the Hayesville, uh, Chamber, and also the volunteers that came out to help us with the car seat check that we had just a couple of weeks ago. Car seat check, we had about thirty-six car seats that we checked out there, so that's, uh, uh, keeping the kids safe and making sure those car seats are installed correctly, so thank you. I know Janet was out there for a little bit, and the mayor was out there for a while. But just thank you to everybody that, that, uh, came out and, and supported us and, and helped out with that and made it happen, and we couldn't do it without volunteers. The next thing, our drug takeback, uh, we took in about a hundred-and-forty-seven pounds of unwanted or unneeded, uh, prescription drugs and otherwise, so, um, that's good, that's a hundred-and-forty-seven pounds of that stuff that's not out floating around somewhere, um, or in Tony's sewer plant, which we don't want to waste some of that. We do have Click It or Ticket coming up, um, it'll run May nineteenth through June second. Uh, we do have additional officers out on KDOT grants, um, to enforce, enforce mostly occupant protection, uh, making sure that everybody's wearing their seat belts and things like that, so I just wanna encourage everybody to buckle up, make sure you're watching those traffic laws, um, and keeping everybody safe. Mr. Crum mentioned just a little bit ago about school getting out, I did wanna cover, uh, curfew real quick, you probably thought I forgot.
I was getting ready to light my own.
I, I know, you were gonna ask. I'm right there with you. Just wanted to remind everybody of the curfew for minor kids, we've been talking about some problems that, that kids do, and not that they go out and get in trouble, but whenever they're out late like that, sometimes that leads to, uh, issues. So just a reminder that if kids are fifteen or under, curfew is between eleven PM and six AM, uh, during the week, that'd be Monday through Thursday, or Sunday through Thursday, excuse me. And then on Friday and Saturday, fifteen and under the curfew is twelve AM to six AM. Uh, for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, they can stay out just a little bit later, Sunday through Thursday, it's midnight to six AM. And then for sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, they have to be inside between one AM and six AM on Fridays and Saturdays, so just wanted to remind everybody of that. Also, our visiting officer up here this evening is Captain Longo, so he's out here, he's, uh, he's the one that helps me out during the day and keeps me in line, so, um, just say hi to him as you go out there, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. All right, next we have Public Works, Tony.
Uh, just a quick reminder, the Recycling Center will be open at Public Works on Saturday, May twenty-fifth, from ten AM to noon. Thank you.
All right, thanks, and, uh, Recreation, Rob.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Hayesville Pool will open for the season on May twenty-fifth. Uh, the Mayor's Bike Ride will be on June first at nine AM in Riggs Park. Kids' Parks Day will be in Riggs Park as well on June first, starting at ten. Uh, the Wichita Children's Theater will be doing its presentation at the Activity Center on June second at two, and Metropolitan Ballet will have its play in the park on June eighth. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. So as you're exercising this month with your bikes, Bike Month, you'll come on out June first for Bike Ride. All right, next we have Item Eight, Appointments. A reappointment of Alan Packard to the Library Board for a four-year term. Counsel McRum?
I make a motion that we approve an appointment, uh, reappointment of Alan Packard to the Library Board to a four-year term.
We have motion as second for the reappointment of Alan Packard to the Library Board. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have Item Nine, Executive Session, we do have one scheduled. Counsel, one better.
Mayor, I make a motion that we recess to Executive Session to discuss personnel matters. If non-elected personnel present to CASA seventy-five-dash-four-three-nineteen-B one and invite the city attorney to attend. The open meeting will resume here at eight-thirty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have motion as second to, we'll take Executive Session as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer is Kessler. Well, sorry, Better?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we're back from Executive Session, we're, uh, no binding action, let's take it. All right, next we have Item Ten, Review of Expenditures, a summary of April expenditures. Counsel, person?
Oh.
Ewer?
I moved to receive and file the April expenditures. Second.
We have motion as second to receive and file the April expenditures. Any discussions? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have Item Eleven, Consent Agenda. Counsel, first, pardon.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion as second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next Item Twelve, Counsel Items, A Counsel Concerns. Counsel, McRum?
Uh, not really a concern, I did want to thank the nine-hundred-and-sixty people that voted in a special election, which I think is probably a pretty good turnout for a special election. I think we did a much better job of getting the information out about what we actually do with that money, and, uh, I'm glad that the majority of people wanted us to continue with it and to enable us to keep up the quality of life items we have here in town, improving the parks and making sure our streets are, are safe and in good shape. Then, I have one other question, it's not a question, Tony, but I know we do our street program every year, we go around and evaluate all the streets. I was wondering if every two or three years, if we could have somebody that would kind of do the same thing with all our hiking bike trails? 'Cause I know we went a really long time, and then all of a sudden, we looked in, what, two or three years ago, we had a whole bunch that needed fixed, and maybe if we stayed on top of that a little bit more regularly, maybe it wouldn't cost too much to get it all taken care of. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other concerns?
I have a concern, not concern, but, um, when we put the bike path in and everything, uh, I came to the city and I said that we could put a bench, uh, on the bike part of my property, so the city came out, they put cement, they put a bench out there, and then I asked for a trash can because people come and sitting in the yard, or sitting on there, and then they're throwing the trash over the fence. And I've asked for a trash can for several times, and, um, it hasn't happened as of yet, but, um, over the weekend, people were walking on bike path in my backyard, my wife was in the backyard before she rode, picking up trash out of the yard. So I would like to have a trash can put in.
Yeah, we'll go, public works and?
I actually am working on that stuff, um, I had reached out to the gentleman that we usually order those from, he had health issues, didn't get back with me, then he finally did. He was supposed to get something to me, he never did, I finally found out that he just retired, so I have a new salesperson, it's on my list, I'm trying to get one.
That's fine, I would just like to get it, 'cause, well, I won't go there anyway.
Just letting you know, I am still working on it, it's on my list.
Okay, that's fine.
Try to keep the city and your backyard cleaned up, right?
Well, at least keep my wife happy, at least we did.
Yeah.
That's important. Any other council concerns? If not, we'll, uh, move on to Item B, Counsel and I Actually Request Updates. We have none, there's nothing, that's good. All right, next we have Item Thirteen, Adfirmment.
Mayor, I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.